This is a WJZ special, Baltimore Standing Together. Now here's WJZ's Vic Carter and Denise Koch.
Hello everyone and welcome to Baltimore Standing Together. This is the first of three public town halls sponsored by WJZ TV, The Baltimore Sun, and the University of Baltimore Schaefer Center for Public Policy. Over the next hour, we will be looking at ways to build a stronger Baltimore. Most of us know what the problems are, but the solutions can be a bit more challenging. Joining us today, we're so very honored to have here, the Honorable Catherine Pugh, Mayor of the City of Baltimore, and Baltimore City Police Commissioner Darrell De Souza. Thank you both for joining us here today.
Thank you.
And also, right here today, my co-anchorman, WJZ's Denise Koch. She's with members of the community who have come here today to participate as well. Denise?
Thank you Vic. Yes, I am among some of the most effective, successful, dedicated leaders and organizations in our community. And as you said, we all know the problems, but these people are working to find the solutions. I think we all share one common goal, which is to bring peace to our streets, to raise the quality of life, and to make sure that our children have hope that they can live a long and full life in a city that cares about them and what they have to contribute. These people are finding some answers to those problems. I can't wait to hear from them, and I am honored to be among them. Vic?
Denise, thank you so much. Crime in Baltimore, the bloodshed that has torn apart so many families, is the real reason that we are here today, as the city is now working to try to find solutions. WJZ Investigator Mike Kelring explains the crucial issue at the heart of Baltimore Standing Together.
Stopping violence in Baltimore has been a persistent challenge for years. In 2017, the city led the nation in murders per capita. From 97-year-old Waddell Tate bludgeoned in his home, to 19-year-old Morgan State sophomore Jonathan Tobash, shot when he happened upon a robbery.
And he's just a good person with a good heart. He's just senseless. No reason why. Start stopping this endless, senseless killing out here in the street, because that's the only hope that I can have, that Jonathan didn't die in vain.
And the city dealt with a string of high-profile assaults. One in Federal Hill left a woman battered. In January, Mayor Catherine Pugh fired Kevin Davis's commissioner and replaced him with Darrell De Souza, a 30-year veteran of the force, confirmed to the job this week. De Souza's an insider. The mayor has demanded he find outside-the-box solutions.
We're also reducing violence. So everybody, you know, it's like the comeback hit. Everybody wants to see, when you're down, somebody, everybody wants to see you get up.
De Souza has made changes in leadership and touted new crime-fighting tech and strategies. More closed-circuit cameras, the ShotSpotter system that immediately alerts police to gunfire, predictive policing, using data to anticipate where violence might break out, and flooding that area with officers. And the mayor is launching the ROKA program, targeting young men once considered unreachable, with intense efforts to get them to turn their lives around.
I'm just probably like another kid going through the system who everybody just wanted to brush off.
Run from us and tell us to go to hell. You are in.
So far this year, murders are down significantly, as are carjackings, robberies, and non-fatal shootings.
Everyone shares the same passion in the police department that the community does, that we know that we gotta, we need the violence to stop.
Governor Hogan stepped in with more state police patrols and warrant sweeps. He's been critical of judges who he says let repeat violent offenders off the hook.
Why do they think that these same folks are arrested, you know, 11 times or 13 times, and why are they still on the streets shooting people?
Another challenge in the crime fight is coming from inside the police department: corruption. A new unit is investigating allegations of wrongdoing brought to light during the Gun Trace Task Force scandal. Eight officers are already headed to federal prison for robbing people and more.
A lot of people, I don't believe, they believe some of these stories are true. But, but they are. And it's crazy, because we're talking about, we're talking about cops. Somebody that's supposed to protect the, protect the city.
De Souza still has to deal with one of the highest-profile killings in 2017: the murder of Detective Sean Suter that happened here in West Baltimore last November. It remains unsolved, and De Souza wants an outside consultant to come in and review the case. Suter was killed the day before he was set to testify in front of a grand jury in the corruption probe. The number of cases compromised by the corrupt cops may run into the thousands.
They thought if their conduct was ever called into question, they could essentially fabricate evidence and rely on it.
With huge challenges, there's hope for a better future, that Baltimore can finally put an end to the cycle of violence.
Well, seeing that story reminds us just how serious this problem is. Now let's see if we can get some answers. With a problem so complex, Madam Mayor, where do you begin?
Yesterday, as we did. When I first became mayor, I think I did a call to action back in January of 2017. And I asked groups and community organizations and individuals out there who were fighting to reduce violence to come together. I called on the community to help us get into the action. I recognize that we have economic and social problems, so we've identified how we can help individuals with those social ills in our community. But it's not one entity that can help us solve crime in our city. There are a number of groups and organizations out here that are helping us to reduce violence. And as I said earlier this week, you know, while we're experiencing a downward trend in violence, there's no one group or organization that can take credit for where we are today. When I think about No Boundaries Coalition, Ceasefire Organization, Mr. Clayton over in East Baltimore with his 40 children, Baltimore Beautiful with 40 children, working every weekend. When I think about all of the groups, Keys Development, and then the strategic efforts that I put together that Harvard University is now studying as a case study for how you bring agencies together with the command staff to focus on how we impact violence reduction in our city. And I think that all of the things in terms of the strategic analysis that this commissioner uses, along with the technology, that is important. But facing those economic issues are important. We've reduced unemployment in the city, but not as low as our surrounding counties. So creating jobs and giving opportunity to those who are hardest to hire, like we've created a one-day's work for one day's, a one-day pay for one day's work, so that we can help identify folks and get them into employment opportunities in our city. We've got, we've required agencies to develop training programs, not to just develop training programs, but to hire people. Last year, we had 9,000 young people who wanted to work, and so I went out privately and raised $14 million to do that. When we started the program this year, people were so excited about it, that when we turned open the valve, 2,000 children applied in one night. We have 15,000 young people now asking to work this summer. So it can't be one entity, or one organization, or one business, or one corporation, company, organization, that can help us reduce violence. It's all of us working together. So helping the unemployment issue, looking at the Board of Houses, how do you create opportunities in desolate communities, all of those things are at the top of my agenda. What people ask me every day is, what is your major focus? I say, reducing violence in the city, because when you look at how people measure the success of a city, it's by virtue of the crime rate, and by virtue of the schools, and the quality of life that exists in your community. So reducing violence is number one, and making sure we have right people in right places, and embracing those in our communities who are willing, ready, able, and already engaged in this fight.
Thank you so much. Commissioner De Souza, this fall squarely in your lap. You're the man responsible. What do you do?
There's a lot of work we have to do, Vic, Denise, and by the way, you have a great first name. That's my sister's name, and she tried to, she tried to join us today at my actual swearing in, but she called the mayor and told the mayor, "Thank you." We have a lot of work to do. It actually started several weeks ago, when I did a reorg of the entire police department. And part of that reorg, I created what's called an inspector general position. And I brought in a retired chief that spent 23 years with the police department. He spent the last 14 years serving as a professor of criminal justice at B-triple-C. He's back in the door. We are identifying his role. And a critical piece in his role is building out what I've said these past several weeks, is a constitutional and impartial policing unit inside there. Another piece of the reorg is that I promoted a new major and put this new major in Internal Affairs. A third piece that I did is I built out what's called a inspections and Integrity Division. And inside that division, we're doing overtime abuse checks. We're doing integrity checks. We're doing random polygraph checks for officers and specialized units. And this piece continued this past weekend, where Sunday, we brought in lieutenant colonels and above for retreat. And then on Monday and Tuesday, these past two days, we actually brought in the captains and above. And we sat down for two and a half days, and we talked about a new vision, a new direction, a new mission for the Baltimore City Police Department. We talked about what is it going to take to get us there? We talked about specifically, what is that pathway? What is that constitutional pathway to get the entire Baltimore City Police Department to one area where the community and the police work together in what's called co-production policing? There's a lot of work to be done. We did great things. We identified seven pillars. I could share it with you now, I could share a little bit later, but they're pillars that is going to be at the fingertips of every single police officer. And I'll tell you a really brief story. We had a breakout group. We had several breakout groups over the past couple of days. And one of the group's 20 or so commanders, their specific mission was to come up with a mission statement or a brand for the police department. And one of the young captains, Captain Atissa Brickus, she stood up in her group, and she was the facilitator of her group, she was the spokesperson, and she said, quite simple, she says, "We are BPD." She said, "That's who we are." And I said to Captain Brickus, I said, "What do you mean? How are we, how are we going to build that out?" And she said that BPD is building professionals that, that deliver. And I thought that was really critical, and I was really proud for her to say that. And that's exactly the things that we need to do. We need to build the entire police department, and it really starts at the command staff level. And that's what we did these past two and a half, two and a half days. So we have a lot of work to do. We're not going to stop. We're an agency that's going to work 24/7. We're not going to give up.
I'm sure you're going to be asked that question many times over. Of course, today is all about our community. Denise is in the audience now with Concerned Citizens.
Right, here's Dr. Ted Sutton. Do you mind standing up?
Yes.
I guess you were called Crazy Ted, but I'm not going to call you that. Nationally recognized as having a real street-level understanding of what's going on in Baltimore. You've heard from the mayor, you've heard from the commissioner. What is your take on where we are right now? The stats show that we're better this year in 2018. From your perspective, what do you think?
Actually, I feel that it may appear, but some major things haven't been addressed. And so it's hard to kind of like move forward until you address issues that we may have already dealt with. We are going to definitely need wraparound services. A lot of the young men that I have dealt with and I work with also are in situations where like a lot of the gang members that I actually have dealt with, and I don't normally call them gang members, I call them young men trying to find their way. Because sometimes if they have one person to believe in them, they actually may be able to do a little bit different. Because I look at myself, yes, I'm Dr. Ted Sutton, but I'm also was Crazy Ted. One of the people, when they talked about the wire, a lot of people knew my godfather, Little Melvin Williams. But I ended up actually changing that entire thing around from being what was called from one of the state's attorneys, one of the people said I shouldn't be allowed to go back into community, into the community, to being a person that ended up addressing the White House and, and actually receiving the Dr. Martin Luther King Award. So only saying that is we're going to have to actually bring the right resources and let grassroots programs be able to have an infrastructure from people who have been getting some of the money and the funds, so it's not just the same programs that are working with some of the same people.
What do you want from them?
Well, actually, I would say, you know, with that, I've seen that, and you know, because I'm also the founder of Men Against Murder, that I'm doing with a man named Dennis Wise, who is very well-known, you know, in the streets, you know. But I'm, I'm saying that, so if we can pull those things together, and the reason I brought up, we have to deal with some other things, because the community still has a distrust with the infrastructure and with the police department and things of that nature. So you're going to continue to hear Freddie Gray's name come up, you're going to continue to hear Tyrone West's name come up, until we have addressed, you know, certain things. And I only say that to say, because I'm not anti-police, I'm anti-wrong. So it doesn't matter, you know, what the situation is, you know, with that, because officers don't have the right to have a bad day. Because when a person at McDonald's has a bad day, I don't get my fries. But if a person at the police department has a bad day, my son doesn't come home. So we have to be more in tune as far as what we're doing, so that we can try to make change. And to be honest with you, and just, just putting this out there, you know, a lot of the young men that I actually do deal with, and that's on Park Heights in East Baltimore, you know, all around, they actually say if they had a means to provide for their children, and that they could live in a safe environment, that they would put the gun down and they would never go back to that old lifestyle.
You want the mayor to respond?
I'd love to respond. I'd absolutely love to respond. And I'd love to respond, because as I said early on, I said to Baltimore, you know, the door is open. Come in, offer your suggestions. And about 90 different groups and organizations did come in. And about 50 of them still sit at the table today. And you know, among them, Keys Development, small groups and organizations, No Boundaries Coalition. And so when they came in, I said, "How can I help you?" Because, you know, I know that out there, there are groups and organizations that have not had access to opportunities to grow their organizations. And so just in the short period of time that they've been meeting with me, and that's twice a month, every month, without fail, they meet in City Hall at 7:30 a.m. And we've had to move out of the conference room up on the fourth floor, because so many groups and organizations are starting to come. We welcome you as well. And so we've been able to provide resources for them as well. We got a half-million dollars just to continue to grow that particular, those groups and organizations. We also created a one-day, the one-day work for one day's pay program is for those individuals out there who find it difficult to come up out of the streets, who can't pass a drug test. But you know, No Boundaries Coalition and other groups have those programs, so that we can identify those individuals. And we have identified opportunities inside of the, of the city agencies, so that if you can get through this, then perhaps we can direct you over here. You know, so as I tell folks, my, my day starts at 4:30 a.m. My day doesn't end until about midnight, because I'm out on the streets every day. I stand on the corner of Pennsylvania and Lawrence Avenue. I've had conversations with individuals about what we need and what we should give. We, I've knocked on doors. You know, we have a mediation train. I tell people, if I can go through it for three hours, to learn how to go out and talk to people in the neighborhoods and communities, everybody ought to be able to do it. Because we are willing to go out, have conversations, bring back resources, as we've done. We've done, I think, two or three of those. We're getting ready to do a fourth one in another part of the city. And so my focus is on reaching out to everybody who will just, you know, my hand is here, you know, I'm willing to pull in, I'm willing to provide the resources, that's what we do. And again, no group is alienated, everybody is invited. And so we'll give you some more additional information, because we're doing that. We also created the Blackmail Initiative Office, because I asked a former mayor who was getting ready to leave office in New Orleans, and I asked him, I said, "What was it that you were not able to accomplish as mayor?" And what he said to me was, "My biggest challenge, Mayor Pugh, was the fact that I could not figure out what to do to how to really lift blackmales up." And so I looked around the nation and said, "Is anybody really doing this?" So Philadelphia does have an office, and Dr. Bundy will head that, head that office for Baltimore City. Because we've got to give opportunity where people traditionally turn their heads, don't look at individuals as though they are individuals in our communities that deserve the opportunity. Everybody deserves the opportunity to work, to live, to have housing, and to have opportunity. And to be, and what this city will become is one of the most inclusive cities in this nation, because we believe in the people who live in our city.
Okay, Mayor, thank you so very much. One way that people have been dealing with crime in the city is called the ceasefire movement. It's a very simple program. It's a citywide call to end the violence. And so far, there have been three ceasefire weekends urging people to stop the killing. Tracy Leon takes a closer look at this grassroots movement.
Hoping to end the bloodshed in Baltimore, a movement that calls for a 72-hour period of peace. The first ceasefire in August of 2017 started with promise, the city uniting with one goal in mind.
You don't have enough politicians, police, guardian angels, or Baltimore ceasefire activists is going to stop the violence. The citizens of Baltimore have to say, "We've had enough."
But it ended with disappointment. Two men were murdered on the second day.
We knew that murder could happen, because it's not just a problem that we can fix by ourselves.
Then in November, as the city neared 300 homicides, organizers attempted to end the violence once again, engaging the community with demonstrations and marches, going directly into neighborhoods, uniting Baltimore with peaceful events.
I don't want anybody to think, you know, they can just scare us away, you know? I mean, a movement is a movement.
A citywide call to honor life that sadly ended with another murder on day two.
Nobody wants to face it. And it's growing like a cancer.
I find it is wrong that it's people dying for nothing.
Without losing sight of their mission, organizers planned the third ceasefire in February. The first successful event, finally, a murder-free weekend.
The community has to go out in the community. We can't rely only on the police and departmental agencies.
A sign of hope that lasted well beyond the weekend. A national spotlight shining on Baltimore for all the right reasons. No murders for more than a week and a half, but shattered when someone was shot to death on day 12.
I don't know, it's just a sad situation. 11 days and now. I was praying and hoping that nothing happened.
As the body count continues to rise, organizers show no signs of stopping their ceasefire movement, until their mission is achieved, to put an end to murder in Baltimore.
Well, if there's a national spotlight shining on Baltimore because of the ceasefire movement, it's because of this wonderful woman here. I said I was honored to be among you. I am honored to be with you, Erica Bridgford. She is the one, one of the founders of the ceasefire movement. And literally puts her body on the line, laying down on the sidewalk, praying at the side of each murder, pouring light into the concrete, as you say. I know you've lost a brother. I know you almost lost another brother. We're talking today about solutions and hope. Are you hopeful, and if so, why?
I'm extremely hopeful, because I believe in Baltimore. I think it's important that we change the narrative about who we are. We know who we are. We are very mischaracterized and misunderstood. And so even narratives like the ceasefire ends when somebody gets killed, that's not our narrative. That's the media's narrative. The ceasefires are successful every single time, because the things that happen leading up to those weekends, during those weekends, 48 hours of nobody being shot in November, 67 hours of nobody dying in August, people having hope all over the city. In this last 11 days, we found out recently that people were having their own policing systems, where somebody would hold the guns, and they would cordon off a section, and people would just fight it out, whatever their problems were. Because nobody wanted to be the one who shot somebody after we were eight, nine, 10 days in. And so that's who Baltimore is. Baltimore is, if you don't give up on me, I will keep showing you who I am. And so as long as we have our hearts in it and our minds in it, we're not competing with one another, and we're standing together, we can do anything. Just watch us do it.
I believe you. Thank you, dear. I believe you. With me also is Mike Hilliard, who is, who has sort of seen the crime in Baltimore from two sides. A major in, in the Baltimore Police Force, and now working with the Harbell Community. And I know that you came today because you have some things you want to ask the mayor and/or the commissioner.
When I work at Harbell, one of the things I consistently see is the community's expectations of the police either exceeds their legal authority, or their resources to actually do it. So how do we appropriately set expectations of the department within the community?
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that. If I could just backtrack one second. Erica, thank you. I owe you a hug. I appreciate what you've done and how you take a stance on crime. But one thing I'll say, and just give me one second, and just bear with me, Denise and Mike, is that Erica, you're brave. And what I will say is that in 30 years in the police department, and some of the commanders who are in this room could say this with me, that a lot of community meetings that we attend, a lot, over the course of 30 years, what I see, what we have seen in these, in the meetings, are always grandmothers. We see grandfathers there. We see the elderly there. We don't see enough of Erica's there. And what's certainly and clearly missing from those community meetings are the men. There are a lot of men that don't know how to heal. They don't know how to self-heal. And it's our responsibility, not just the mayor, not just the commissioner, not just the police department, but it's the community's responsibility for the men to step up, because there's a lot of young men on the streets that are, are begging, that they're begging for role models. And they need to see the men like us in this room, the docs, they need to see us. And I think it's our responsibility for 2018, if any other time we're going to do it, we need to do it now. Mike, I would say that, and I said this earlier today, and I said it years ago in the past, that if you look at the 220 different community associations in Baltimore City, theoretically there should be 220 different crime plans in Baltimore City. In those crime plans, it should be what's called co-production policing. And that's where the police and the community come together, and they make the crime plan. And then we hold each other accountable for that crime plan. And that crime plan doesn't mean arresting our way out of the problem. The plan should involve what are the community issues, and how do we fix it collectively? And until we sit down in a room and have those healthy conversations, we're going to be spinning wheels. But we should be held accountable, because we took an oath. The police officers took an oath their first day in the job. They took an oath when they graduated from the police academy. And it is our responsibility, it is our responsibility to be transparent and to build trust, trust in the community. And we will. And we'll knock down those barriers, we'll knock down those silos, and all the things that we've done in the past that's been in a covert manner, those engagements that we've done on the streets in a covert manner, they'll be very overt in this year and years coming.
Can I, can I also add, Mike, that it really is a responsibility of community organizations to bring others in. And we don't see enough business people in those meetings. We don't see enough young people in those meetings. And in some areas, we don't see enough diversity in those meetings. And so if we're going to be engaging, we have to be engaging of our entire communities. And what we want to do is make sure that we're lining up the resources with the needs of the communities. And so, you know, we continue again to open our doors. And I also want to say to Erica as well, that, you know, one of the things that I love about ceasefire and people, I never forget being out with them one time, and everybody kept running over to me with the mic. I said, "No, no, no, no. That's the person you need to talk to." Because the mayor doesn't have to stand in front of every activity that is taking place. What the mayor needs to do is support and push forward things that are working in our communities. And that's why, you know, working with community groups and organizations is so important to me, in terms of how we provide resources and open the doors and give access to groups and organizations in this city that have been in the fight for a long time. And I've said this to the philanthropic community, don't identify the problem and then think you have the solution, and then think you have to bring the solution to us. The solutions are within our neighborhoods and our communities. And so you have to put your arms around the neighborhoods and communities and the people who are doing the work, and give them the support that they need. And we're willing to do that.
Okay, thank you so very much. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Erica, my shero. Well, before we continue with this town hall, we want to tell you about a research program here at the Schaefer Center for Public Policy at the University of Baltimore. It's called Be Heard Baltimore. It's a citizen engagement project that provides opportunities for Baltimore residents to share their opinions with policymakers about important issues and current events. You can get involved by taking part in Be Heard Baltimore surveys. You can find the link on the Baltimore Standing Together page at wjz.com or at beheardbaltimore.u-balt.edu. Denise, back to you.
Thank you, Vic. Well, as you know, when we talk about 340-some murders, we're not just talking about numbers, we're talking about victims. We're talking about families, devastated families. And we have learned over the past year that that kind of devastation can happen to anyone. It can happen to Attorney Warren Brown, his family. It can happen to T.J. Smith, to his family. And it can happen to the family of veteran state delegate, Tomage Branch.
Tyrone was the person who I would least expect something to happen to, because he was so loved. No matter where we went, somebody knew him.
22-year-old Tyrone Ray was known and loved by his family, his two children, his coworkers, and the kids he coached in football. It is possible the two men who walked up to him last Labor Day and shot him nine times on the street in Bel Air Edison also knew him. It was noon, he was on crutches. This picture was taken just before his mother got the call.
I caught my dad and my mother, and I just had a feeling in my heart that something wasn't right.
And she was telling me that he was shot, he was shot. I told her, you know, things might be okay, because, but we didn't know to the extent, what extent it was.
Tyrone was dead by the time Chanel reached the hospital. They have arrested and charged one 19-year-old suspect. They have identified, but not yet arrested, the second. But no justice system can relieve the pain.
I'm trying to help my daughter and keep her strong and keep her, help her keep her sanity, and then at the same time, work with her to bury her child.
If you can think of a time where you may have been frightened and your heart has, you had a piercing feel into your heart, that's what I feel every day. Sometimes I change my clothes three times, because I don't want to put on blue. Because it's his favorite.
That was his favorite color.
If you look at the city, for 2017, I think Tyrone was number 239. If you look at the city, for 2017, I think Tyrone was number 239. We ended up having more than 342 families to go through and deal with what she's dealing with and what I'm dealing with now, which I wouldn't want to wish on anybody.
And what they most likely will deal with for the rest of their lives. I'm with James Simpson, who is from Safe Streets. And that's very, I know you're very close to the Branch family because a bill that is probably going to pass, is tremendous support in Annapolis, is the Tyrone Ray Safe Streets Initiative, which is going to give you a lot more funding. Safe Streets, a phenomenal organization, unusual organization. You try and mediate and stop the violence before it happens, which I don't know how the heck you do that. And I know you also use previously incarcerated people because they know the streets. Talk to us about your work and then tell us what you'd like to hear from the mayor and from the police commissioner.
Absolutely. So first of all, Safe Streets is a public health approach to reducing homicides and shootings in disproportionate neighborhoods throughout Baltimore City. So right now, we're in four different neighborhoods across the city. We have gotten a wonderful boost in morale and boost in pledge from our mayor to expand the program to 10 different neighborhoods across the city.
All right.
But what we do is we use relationships that we have with people in the neighborhoods that we work in to try to mediate street-level conflict before it turns into someone getting shot or killed.
How do you find it?
Because we're from those neighborhoods. So we know the people in those neighborhoods. We use a simple approach. We use what the same way the World Health Organization treats epidemics is the same way we treat violence. Number one, we have to identify and detect. Two, we have to interrupt and intervene. And third, we have to change behaviors and norms. So we take that same approach to violence. We identify and detect because we're from those neighborhoods. We interrupt and intervene because we know the people who are causing the havoc. And changing the behaviors and norms, which has been the most difficult part, is what we work on every day.
So you're going to get a lot of money, it looks like. That'll help. What else do you need that they need to give you?
We just, we've gotten a commitment from the mayor that we need to be able to push the program forward. I know Commissioner D'Souza now, from when he was in other positions of the police department, and I know from my knowledge of him, he's been very committed to the community. So I think, piggybacking off of what Erica said, we have hope because for once, it seems like the city is moving in a direction where we can really, I guess, where we can really see some change. We can really get some things done.
So let me just say first, thank you to Safe Streets. I think you're celebrating 500 days with nothing happening in the Safe Streets area, which is one.
Yes, 500 days without a homicide in our east, in our east side.
And, you know, it really is important to understand what's working in your community. And I came in as mayor, not really knowledgeable of Safe Streets. I think we had four. We were in four different neighborhoods. And to know of their success, and people started talking about it, talking about it. And they too come to the table, by the way, are part of our Call to Action group. And so to expand that program to six additional communities throughout the city of Baltimore, I think will bode well for the city and its future. And this is what I call listening to the people, hearing what's going on, keeping your ear to the ground, and then opening yourself up in such a way that they can communicate with you freely. And so thank you for all the work that you do. I look forward to the work that you'll do in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vic.
Earlier this year, I had the great opportunity of covering a unique story of forgiveness. As many of you may remember, former city councilwoman Ricky Spector was battered and bruised during a terrible carjacking. What you may not know is that she befriended the two teenagers who attacked her. December 2016, a typical Friday turns to terror for then-city councilwoman Ricky Spector. It's 10 o'clock in the morning and she's walking to her car parked in a South Baltimore garage. Suddenly, the 80-year-old notices two teenagers walking toward her just as she's getting into her car.
They pulled the door open, punched me out, and then threw me across the garage into a concrete pillar.
The day that you encountered Ms. Spector, was it just random? Or had you thought about what you were going to do that day?
It was random. It just came out of nowhere for me.
Describe that for me.
I can't really describe it. It just came out of nowhere.
But as the boys try to drive off, a security gate prevents them from getting out of the garage. Spector, screaming, beaten, and bruised, attracts the attention of two good Samaritans who rush to help. Eventually, police arrest the two. You obviously had to go through the legal process. Tell me about that.
When we went to court and the judge told me that the big one was going to put honor up to what he did and plead guilty for what he did, I went over to him and I said, "I'm really proud of you for recognizing and owning up to what you did wrong."
You obviously had a special place for these boys.
Do you know what the big one did, Vic? We just hugged each other. And I knew I was hooked.
In an amazing twist of fate, Spector is now an advocate for the boys. She credits U Empower Maryland. That's a community-based program that works with children in high-crime areas in hopes of making sure they don't end up in a life of crime themselves. When you look at your life back then and your life now, how would you describe in terms of how they are different?
I'm doing better in school. In the neighborhood, I'm doing better.
Bad things, they try to follow me everywhere I go. But I just think about that, that thing. I don't want to go down that road again.
And Spector is there to help keep the boys on track. She sees them often and says she loves them as her own children. When you see these boys...
They're my boys.
They're your boys. What do you say to them?
I kiss them and I hug them and I say to them, "I'm so glad I see you. I'm so glad to be with you."
And they like that, don't they?
If we have young people to deal with, that restorative justice, restoring their faith, your faith, your love, your humanity, is so much better than if they had been given some punitive punishment. I really love those boys. And just like my own, I don't always like them, but I always love them.
And we are truly honored to have former councilwoman Ricky Spector here with us today.
Ricky. So unfortunately, we'd hoped to have Michelle here from U Empower, but she had to be called away. But you can talk about this program and why you think it's so effective.
It's been a journey, Denise. And I myself went from victim to victor. I have been on a journey that has made me so inspired that if we recognize them, we have the empathy and the caring and the feeling, that when I said to the big one that my great-grandson said, "Kids don't hit grownups," do you know what he did? He burst out crying and hugged me. So those are the kinds of things that we have to think about in terms of caring and making sure that we give every opportunity we can if they haven't had them. Thanks to the mayor, she has made available to this community a wonderful school building, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. The kids, we have an interracial, intergenerational program in the former Samuel F. B. Moore School. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And every day, we go and clean and cook and do everything.
As part of U Empower?
As part of U Empower. It is a program that's a food project. It's to give entrepreneurial skills to the adults, to teach good eating habits, and a shelter for the community that doesn't have these kind of good resources. So we have wonderful good Samaritans that are coming and volunteering. And I am just so, I am so inspired. And everybody that I talk to, they become inspired and they contribute and they volunteer on the weekends. People come and help us clean and get our building ready, Madam Mayor. And I expect you next Saturday.
You know, Erica was about to jump up and hug you during that story. She says that crime is a product of pain, causes pain, and can be healed through kindness. And it worked for you.
Yes, it did.
Thank you, Ricky.
Can I add something there, Denise? Because we want to get to children before they get to that point. We really do. And I never forget riding down, riding up McCullough Boulevard one morning on McCullough Street and seeing a young man who's about 14 years old. And I rolled the window down, got a lot of criticism because I said, "What are you doing?" He says he's on the corner, "Trying to make a little bit of money at 10 o'clock in the morning." And I said, "Go to school. Go to school now." And he went towards school. But what folks don't know is that I encountered that young man at 9:30 the same night, sitting on the side of Pennsylvania Avenue and eating a piece of bread. And I asked him, "Why are you here?" And he ran up to the truck because he recognized me from that morning and said, "You know, I'm waiting for my mom." And I said, "Can I help you? Give me your address. Give me your school." He said, "I'm waiting for my mother." The next day, I went up to the school and had a conversation with him. And this is a 14-year-old. You know, because I went to work at 14, but not because I had to, but because when my dad gave me that $100 to go get my school clothes, I told him it wasn't enough. He said, "You need a job." But this young man, when I went up to the school, said, "I need a job." A 14-year-old said, "I need a job." What I want you to know was that he was also homeless. So we've got wraparound services for his family. They'll be moving into their new place. He is working in Baltimore Beautiful, getting, working four hours on Saturdays at $10 an hour. He is getting mentoring services from Baltimore Brothers and Keys Development. So we've wrapped our arms around him. It is important that we get to our young people before they get to that point. Because it's easier to stare them in the right direction and wrap our arms around them and see them as valuable and get them to understand how valuable they are. And so thank you, Ricky, for what you've done. But more importantly, what we're saying to the community is that there are a lot of young people out there that need mentoring, that need help, that need you to reach out to them. And so whether it's through Keys Development or all the other organizations, or Ceasefire, or Ricky's program, they need more mentors because they're trying to help as many young people as we can.
Okay. Mayor, thank you so very much. For months, we have been hearing that experts who help deter crime in other cities were coming here to Baltimore to help out. Rick Ritter shows us that that now is a reality as the city focuses on technology designed to show officers where they need to be before a crime occurs.
Some cowards with guns.
They just don't understand the pain, the terror, and the hurt that they cause.
Violence in the city is out of control.
Inundated by senseless crime, the spotlight continues to shine on Baltimore as violence rips the city apart. Last year, Baltimore hit 343 homicides, and more than 80% of the victims and suspects had prior criminal records.
Desperate for answers, city leaders are now embracing what's known as predictive policing.
We have to get the communities' buy-in with this. And it's critical that the community trusts us.
It's a computer software that stirs up algorithms predicting when and where crimes may happen.
The whole concept behind predictive policing is to get in front of the crime before it even occurs.
The maps will show small red squares as targets, deploying officers to those hotspots, telling them where to be exactly and for how long. Baltimore City's new police commissioner, Darrell D'Souza. So the goal isn't how many suspects can you take into custody.
Correct.
It's how many crimes you can prevent.
If we have to make an arrest, then we didn't do our job properly.
The program helped turn crime around in Los Angeles and is now driving down violence in Chicago, although some are still skeptical. For people out there who think this is going to bring us back to that old-style policing that drew a lot of outrage in this city, what would you say to that?
100% not. I know and I'm very familiar with what zero tolerance brought to Baltimore City.
D'Souza emphasizes it's all about positive engagement with the community and denying criminals' opportunity.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, we've been hearing a lot about this technology. We know that some of it is in place already. Real quickly, tell us how it's working and is it going to make a difference?
Well, under the mayor's direction, we have two districts, the eastern and the western, and we're standing up what's called a Strategic Decision Support Center. And in both those districts, what that means is that there are baby fusion centers in both. And part of that fusion center is this predictive policing software where it takes very, very specific data and it goes back five years. It takes a look at crime. It looks at crime trends, days a week, hours, and it kind of stirs it up in a pot. And based on the results, it tells us in policing where we need to deploy our officers. So it's telling us where to go and it's telling us what time to be there. And it's telling us how long we need to stay at that location. And the officers, like literally, it sounds something from some other world, some other place like Star Wars, where the officers actually have a counter. There's an application on their phone and it actually tells them how long they need to be in that specific location. If the officer needs to leave before, then they absolutely have the authority to leave. But it tells them where to go. And the whole concept behind predictive policing is that we want to prevent a crime before it even starts. So if the crime occurred and even if the arrest is made, then it's a little bit too late. And I will say this time after time after time, that we need, we need the community's buy-in with this. And before we even launch it, before we even start building it out completely, the framework is in place now, but before we even start day one, that we need and we must and we will bring the community to the table and tell the community exactly what it is, what the expectations are. And we, quite frankly, need the community's support and buying in this. And we need them at the table.
So can I also add to, real quickly, that that was not the only technology missing from our police department. In 1997, they started putting computers in police cars in Prince George's County, Montgomery County. We didn't have them here. Got $2 million from the state to put computers in our police cars, $5 million from Bloomberg Philanthropies to increase the lighting and also the technology for our city, gunshot detection, license plate readers. This was a under-invested in police department. And so technology is important, but policing and community policing is what we want in our city, engaging the community in our fight.
Thank you very much. The No Boundaries Coalition is also making a big difference in West Baltimore. Devon Bartolata shows us how small changes are having a big impact there.
Basket over there that's running over.
It's fresh. It's local.
Oh, I see something else.
It's changing lives.
You got plenty of, you know, chicken box places. You got plenty of junk food, corner carryouts, liquor stores, but they need fresh fruits and vegetables.
Tucked away in Avenue Market on Pennsylvania Avenue is fresh on the avenue. This month, celebrating two years of eating away at a near-food desert that plagues much of West Baltimore.
Two years of making a statement that this community values fresh vegetables and fruits, that they're willing to pay for them, that they know how to use them. And it is not really an education issue so much it is an access issue.
The prices are low, the quality high.
They have nice items, you know. Every week is something different.
It's all part of the No Boundaries Coalition's Herculean effort to change the stigma surrounding Central West Baltimore. The intersection of Penn and North, not far from here, was the site of defining moments and riots in the aftermath of the death of Freddie Gray.
This block is historically the center of African-American culture in Baltimore City. And sadly, the city has kind of let it go. But there is a culture here that can't be duplicated.
Executive Director Ray Kelly, who grew up here, knows the small changes. From weekly neighborhood cleanup.
Either we're going to be part of the problem or part of the solution.
To healthy options like free yoga classes and, of course, access to healthy foods, are the building blocks to changing Baltimore.
And I am here now with Ray Kelly, who you just saw in that piece. And I guess the question is, what does yoga and fresh produce have to do with the subject today, which is crime? How does it all fit together?
So a big issue in our community is disinvestment, separation, and lack of hope. So what we do is not only bring opportunities, networks, but we also try to bring healing into the community. Things that aren't customary to what we know as Pennsylvania Avenue these days exist in our community. So we try to create what we call an access yield. So our newest program will be the On-Demand Access Yield. And it's to actually listen to the community, find out what it is they need or feel like will help them, and use our network to try to get them in that position, be it treatment, be it training, be it therapy, be it whatever the case. We want to make sure we're not sitting in a back room somewhere deciding what our community needs when we're right there on Pennsylvania. And large, we can walk out the door and ask anyone on the corner, "What do you need?"
No boundaries to needs.
Exactly.
Or to expressing those needs. What do you have to ask for the mayor, the commissioner?
So I think I always ask my question. So I concede to one of our youth organizers who's prepared a question for the commissioner and the mayor.
How y'all doing today? Good evening. My name is Wonya Rebecca. I am a No Boundaries organizer in West Baltimore community. First off, I would like to say congratulations to you on your appointment. My question to you, Commissioner D'Souza and Mayor Pugh, is do you trust your police department? That's my first question. My second question is, what plan do you want to introduce to help build trust in the community and with the residents implementing it in the mandated forms and a consent decree? And also, we know it takes the wisdom of the elders and... And also, we know it takes the wisdom of the elders and the energy of the young people to make this change happen that we want to see in Baltimore City. So are you willing to work with the young people in the city to make this change happen?
Yeah.
Big questions.
Yeah. So I don't know which one to attack first, but I will say this, is that do I trust the men and women of the Baltimore City Police Department? My answer is simple, is that the, I know that the majority, the overwhelming majority of the men and women of the police department do their job honorably. I know that there are officers out there who have deviated from that. I know that there are officers who have circumvented systems and led a police department to a point where it has gotten corrupt. And to me, I will not tolerate it. Those officers that are here that think they can circumvent systems, that could, and that they betray the trust of the community and the citizens of Baltimore, we're not having it anymore. I feel comfortable in that I've put mechanisms in place. I'm still doing some restructuring in the police department, but I know very much what the pain points are. And I know that the pain points are what the GTTF did, what the officers did that worked specialized units, what officers did when they come around money and how they abused the system. So I put a lot of structures in place almost immediately. I'm not finished. I have some more places and more things to do that's going to strengthen us even more. But just have faith in me and have faith in my command staff. We had a two-and-a-half-day retreat and we quite clearly spelt the definition out for them, and we're not going to tolerate it. There's an overtime abuse unit that we're doing. I'm embarrassed to say that in 2017, in 2017, we had two, two integrity tests done in the entire police department. It's unacceptable. So the IG is literally sitting to your right, two down. Chief Jackson, he's in charge. He's in charge of integrity tests. And we're going to make sure that we do integrity tests on a regular basis. And when I say integrity tests, I mean a test that's done, if you pick up the telephone and you call a police station and how that transaction, how that encounter, how that language goes back and forth, all the way to taking some money and putting it on a park bench and seeing the officer does the right job. I'm taking all these steps to make sure that what we went through, that we will never go through it again.
Let me just say also that when I came into office, people said, you know, you needed to sign the consent decree, a consent decree that was not done. What we got was a 163-page report from the Department of Justice that pointed out over 10 years of abuse by our police department. And it mandated that we put together a consent decree. The reason, even under this administration, that I thought it was important to do that is because we need to restore faith in the community in our police department. Not only do we have an oversight team, we have a community engagement team. And I interviewed with every single organization and individual who applied to be monitors for the city of Baltimore. What I did not see was the proper community engagement team. And so we went to the judge and said, "We need to select a community engagement team that is from the community." And so we have a community engagement team that is from the community. And let me just say, she talked about young people and how important it is to engage them. We have, Baltimore City, a $12 million youth fund dedicated just to programming for youth. We also have, working with the Family League, additional programs related to youth. And I also want to mention that I shut down Shake &amp; Bake on Pennsylvania Avenue because mediocrity is not acceptable for me. Roof falling in, you were hard-pressed to find roller skates that matched, and the floor was buckling. And so we will open up Shake &amp; Bake sometime this month. It's a surprise. We'll tell you what the date is. But new, new floor, air-conditioned building, new bathrooms, 500 pairs of brand-new skates because that's what the community deserves.
You are not done. You are just starting. We unfortunately are close to being done. But it is a new year. It is a new era. And I heard the word "hope" out of a lot of people's mouths tonight, which is wonderful. And we want to continue this conversation. So I say to those of you who are watching, if you are doing good work in your community, let us know about it. We will, we want to report on it. We get tired of reporting the problems. We also want to report the solution. So reach out to us. Let us know. We want to tell your story, and we will. I give you my commitment to that, Vic.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Denise. We again want to thank the police commissioner and the mayor for joining us here today for this very important conversation with these, the people you serve. Reminder, you can also let your voices be heard by taking part in the Be Heard Baltimore surveys. You can find the link on the Baltimore Standing Together page at wjz.com or by going to beheardbaltimore.ubalt.edu. We look forward to continuing these conversations and we'll hold additional town hall meetings later this year addressing opioids and city schools. On behalf of WJZ TV, The Baltimore Sun, the University of Baltimore, Schaefer Center for Public Policy, we thank you so much for joining us, and let's keep talking. Good evening. This has been a WJZ special, Baltimore Standing Together.